Please rise for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take role.
Commissioner Solinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Semensky.
Here.
Commissioner Umberto. Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Commissioner McBride. Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Chair Whitliff.
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time the planning commission can't take action to approve the February 3rd, 2022 agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make.
Motion by Mick, second. Bob, any discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Solinsky.
Yes.
Commissioner Semensky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes. Thank you. Conflict of interest, this time the chair will ask if there's any conflicts of interest on the approved agenda. Is there any, Bob?
Nope.
Mick?
Roger?
No, thank you.
Self, none? Approval of minutes, this time the planning commission can approve the January 6th, 2022 meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
Motion by Roger, second.
Second.
Bob? Discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Solinsky.
Yes.
Commissioner Semensky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Correspondence? Is there any correspondence?
I have one I'd like to read here. I also, you guys have gotten all the other ones sent your email, but this is one I thought I should read in person.
Okay.
So, this is from Jake Parcell, the executive director of Scenic Michigan. So it says, "Dear Planning Commission members, I'm writing today as representative of Scenic Michigan to advocate in support of your municipality adopting an ordinance that protects scenic view sheds in Michigan. Through conversations with your community members, I have been made aware of the view shed amendment up for consideration this evening. We at Scenic Michigan strongly believe that our state's breathtaking vistas should be protected and regulation through municipal ordinance are one of the ways to accomplish this. I'm happy to discuss this in detail and offer our organization as a resource to your community as you work to review your ordinances. Please feel free to reach out to me via email should you have any questions. Sincerely, Jake Parcell." And when we come to discussion, I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
That particular one.
Thank you. Is that it, Zach?
That all the other ones have been sent to you.
All right, they're good. Okay, moving along, public hearing. We will open the public hearing on view shed amendment.
You state the time for Nancy.
Time is 7:05.
So. So I've got the memo here. This is the view shed language we discussed previously. If you, I mean, if you guys want me to read it, I'm happy to do so.
Could you please?
Okay. So this would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance in Article 2, definitions and interpretations, and it would add under V, "View shed, an area of land, water, or other environmental element that is visible to the human eye from a fixed vantage point." And this would also include an amendment to Article 5, general provisions. You again? I thought you asked, did you ask something? Oh, okay. General provisions, Section 505 watershed protection, and it'll have amendment for G, where it says nothing in this ordinance is intended to protect view sheds. So this is the request the tree commission had asked if you guys, if this was something you guys were interested in. They weren't quite sure. At the last meeting, it must have been, you guys asked for some view shed language. This is what we came up with. Didn't hear any blowback, so. If you guys have any questions, I can do questions before we do a public comment, or.
All right, any questions?
Well, this is basically what we wanted, isn't it? Yeah, no.
All right, no questions.
No questions.
All right, well, I would take some comments from the public.
And we move along to public comment?
No, this is still within the public hearing.
Public hearing, public report, no.
It's public comment on the public hearing?
Right.
On this item?
Yes.
Okay, just making it clear.
Got you.
Public comment on the public hearing for the public?
Yeah, there you go.
If you want to make a comment, please come to the podium, name and address.
Public here, boss.
Five minutes.
Not in the mood.
You have up to five minutes?
Public hearing for a public comment.
You sign in here too, or?
As long as you. Mr. Chairman, Plan Commission, my name is Dave Bachman. I live at 422 Spruce Street in the city. I'm also the District 1 City Council member. As a citizen, I'm here to ask you, when you consider the view shed, if you choose to consider it, do you protect the view shed for all of us, not just for the public? Private and the public, the community ought to have the right to ask their view shed to be reviewed. It seems to me that this issue came from the tree commission from a conflict with one person. And I get the impression the tree commission dealt with that, and they've closed the door on that appeal. But then by creating a law that now says none of us citizens can come to the commission, the tree commission, and ask that our view shed be protected would be a disservice to those who live and pay taxes in the city. So as you go through this, if you choose to look at the view shed, I'd ask you to preserve my right as a citizen to appeal to the tree commission to have my view shed protected. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. So why don't you just sign in, you got the cover? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I bring these to you now?
Sure. We have five.
All right, well, hello everyone. I'm Jen Teller from 712 Harbor Drive. And how's everyone doing this evening? See some nods.
Very good, thank you.
Well, tonight I am here to speak up for all those who don't even know that they may lose a wonderful asset that Manistee has to offer, and that's view shed to water. A more complete definition of view shed is an area that is visible from a certain vantage point, especially when considered valuable or worth preserving for aesthetic reasons. View sheds to water are valuable and worth preserving. Just ask people who have them, like those in Lighthouse Landings, those along Manistee River, those in condos on Arthur Street, those who have hotels, those who have restaurants that back up to water views. Ask them how they would feel if they lost their view shed because of overgrowth and no maintenance of trees. There are two distinct and different issues regarding view shed at stake here. The first one is private property owners versus private property owners, as you were told, or as the tree commission was told regarding a onecoma issue. And that belongs here. That is private property, as I said, to private property. The second issue that I'm addressing is private property owners versus public, taxpayer-supported property involving view shed through trees, not buildings. Building, anything with a building belongs here, absolutely, if there's a question. But there is no written policy that deals with the wonderful asset that Manistee has to offer, and that's the view shed to water. Even the city attorney wrote that nothing needs to be done about this. The proposed ordinance that says, quote, "Nothing in this ordinance will protect view shed," end quote, denies a lot of people the opportunity to enjoy and maintain what draws people here in the first place, view shed to water. Please don't take the path of least resistance by passing this one-size-fits-all ordinance. Please review the folder that was just handed in to your chair, and it offers three different ways to craft a reasonable and flexible policy that serves the city in a more holistic way than just saying no. There is so much more to this issue, and we hope you will take time to consider these policies that are used in Harbor Springs. There's two that they have, and there's one proposed for Manistee. If you go on YouTube, City of Manistee Tree Commission from 21 November 8th of 2021, you can hear what the tree commission was saying about the whole issue of trees and their maintenance and protecting view sheds. And then if you go to manistemi.gov, all the way to the bottom, and click on helpful links, there's a video there that shows our response to that initial meeting back in November. And I think it's very significant that you take the time to take a look at these because just to say, as I mentioned, no, it's a big disservice to the city of Manistee. You are on a peninsula here, all the way around on both sides of the river, in Lake Michigan, Manistee Lake, we also have Manmade Lake, and a lot of people have view sheds. And as I mentioned, if that's taken away with one stroke of the pen on one sentence, how is that serving the citizens of Manistee?
Thirty seconds.
Even Linda Beaton said at an August 4th meeting that she is there to serve the requests and desires of the taxpayers. And she is right, everybody needs to be served. And we're a section that has an opportunity, not just me. This isn't just about me and my limb trim that we've been through for the last eight years. This is now, has affected everyone that has a view shed opportunity in the community. So we are asking that you would at least be patient, let the tree commission work on putting together, crafting a plan that will serve all the people that have view sheds, from businesses to condos to homes to hotels, motels. There needs to be a lot more work done here than just saying, mm, nobody gets a view shed anymore. And it'll save.
It's time.
Oh, okay. Well, if you read the packet, please, there's a couple things in there from Harbor Springs that'll help craft that policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
My name is Dale Teller, I'm 712 Harbor Drive also. And I wasn't really going to say anything, but every time I come to one of these meetings, I can't figure out why we've reached this point. I understand the view shed and so on and so forth. But if you initiate this tonight, or whenever, you've eliminated any opportunity for people to come to you, come to the tree commission, whoever, to discuss their issue, their problem. Jenny and I have been going through this for eight years. In my opinion, and she knows it, I think the line was drawn seven and a half years ago, you against us. I really believe that. And I'm not going to get into specifics, but for that limb trim that we're talking about, this all started with that. It's a simple limb, and we were going to pay for it. And we were going to do all those things, wouldn't going to cost the city a dime. And if anybody ever came over to our deck to look out, you would see what we're talking about. Initially, when this house was built, was not a problem, was not an issue. But now trees grow. And consequently, this tree, and Jenny is right too, this is not just a personal thing. And we'll live with it, whatever the decision is, but ultimately, I just did not figure out how we've reached this point, where we're going to eliminate a view shed ordinance. And then if anybody else wants to do what we're trying to do, can't even do it. Can't even address, can't even come to the tree commission and say, hey, look, we've got this issue. So I mean, I think it's counterproductive, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Linda Beaton. I know there's a lot of passion behind.
Address, please.
Pardon me?
Address.
256 Hughes Street, City of Manistee. I know there's a lot of passion behind this request, it's been ongoing for a long time. I just want to point out that the tree commission bylaws have never included any guidelines on watersheds or water views. They're, they've never intended, they've never tried to, they've never wanted to do that. They've been very consistent in their response on this. They are dealing with public safety, they are dealing with diseased trees, they are dealing with the basic safety issues that we need. Jeff McCullough has been up here before it would open up. All the tree commission really wanted was a definition on the view sheds and some language. So I think we just need to ratchet this down a little bit. This doesn't even belong within their bylaws to deal with, and we just revise the bylaws. So I just want to throw that out there so that we can kind of take a longer view of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? None? Close the public comment on view shed. Close this portion of it and move along, open, close it, and move along to lot coverage rain garden amendment. Time is 7:17, 7:18, excuse me.
And you opened the new one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do you guys want me to read this amendment language for you guys?
Yes.
That'd be helpful?
Okay.
So this one goes in Section 514 of the zoning ordinance, and it would be adding Section Q here. "Stormwater infiltration from landscaped islands and buffers resulting in a net reduction in stormwater runoff as determined by the city engineer may allow the zoning administrator to waive the requirements of lot coverage for a parking lot." This is something that the, our office has been working on here. We've been working with the city manager as well. Lot coverage definition was changed in October. There's been some concerns from that point. This helps to address it. At the end of the day, I think this is a huge win for the city. It allows business owners to get what they need as far as parking requirements, but also it protects our valuable natural resources, which we obviously know is a great deal. This is our first step towards addressing stormwater, which is an issue that isn't addressed in the zoning ordinance, and it's not really addressed in the city in a large amount at all. So this is kind of the first step. The city engineer and I have discussed this, and we're hoping to really bolster down on that. Stormwater is especially something I hold dear as a former biologist. Passionate about rainwater, that was, that was stormwater, it was one of my thesis when I was in grad school, was stormwater management. And just the fishery alone, I'll just, just for a second, I'll talk, the fishery and the, sure, there's pollutants, but then you're warming that water, and we're trying to keep cold water trout around here if we can help it. So I think this is a great step to get into that point. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to.
Any questions? Bob? Mick?
You know, again, I, you know, this is also linked to the whole idea of lot coverage, correct?
Lot coverage, yeah.
And that's, I think, part of my concern is that I think somehow we have to have more flexibility within the lot coverage ordinance that we have. And I know this addresses one part, but I would like to see this expanded. You've given yourself an opportunity as a planner to be able to address water runoff and lot coverage as far as parking lots. But I don't know that there's any way for somebody who's on a very small lot to extend their driveway or for them.
Driveways aren't part of lot coverage.
The driveway is not, okay.
They're excluded. Yep.
Or the same thing with somebody wants to have a deck. You know, there's all different types of decking. Some of them, you know, are porous and wouldn't impact water runoff, and others, obviously.
And porous doesn't count either.
Okay, so that's the, it's only the solid decking that we're talking about as an inclusion on that?
All right.
A lot of the concerns about like, when you talk about like, well, you know, what about me? I've built out my lot, and you know, I'm concerned that now you're, I'm not going to be able to do whatever. Well, in most cases, their grandfather, they can't add additions to it, but they can do maintenance on their lot. This isn't going to affect them either, as long as they, you know, don't expand those lot coverage numbers. You can always also, if the city thinks that they need to relook at these lot coverage numbers, that's a possibility as well. I can tell you that I've reviewed many of the ordinances that Mr. Spaulding had issues with. Most of them that he was in there, he was incorrect on his definition of them, and they all did have parking lots, including in their lot coverage. I think one was actually, he was completely correct, and all the other ones, he was false. And that was in Sheboygan. So this is a pretty common planning practice, and it is to deal with water runoff. And what Zach said was exactly true, but the issue is also, a lot of the other ordinances that I reviewed actually have stricter requirements as far as lot coverage goes. In Manistee, there's a lot of leverage given because of the, due to the small parcel sizes. So parking lots, or I mean, sorry, driveways are exempted from that. You don't see that in every ordinance, and a lot of them, they're actually included. So the city's been pretty fair in their lot coverage amount. They've also give, and like, you want to put a patio in, if you're using impervious pavers or concrete that allows for the water to drain through, then you're also allowed to continue and pave the lot, so. There's a lot of flexibility with it. Really, it's structures and covered decks, or, you know, concrete that is not impervious. So there's some flexibility in there to try to address some of these rainwater issues that are in the city, especially within our downtown area. We have a lot of drains that flow right into the river, and they're, you know, I don't think everybody knows how many drains are actually connected to those or where they actually run from. So this is one of the first things we've looked at, like, as far as trying to regulate some of that. And I think Zach, you know, was speaking a little from his heart, but yeah, I think he was, he's right. It does affect like the fisheries and the warm water runoff, especially in your summer months, July, August, where, you know, the, you get a nice summer rain, that's hot water, that's shocking fish in your rivers, and if it's late fall rain or something like that, it can do the fishing, you know, fish hatcheries, algae blooms, like Zach said, is a possibility as well. So, you know, just some things that can offset that. Really, there's another county ordinance that says you're, and this doesn't typically apply to the city because you guys have stormwater retention. But within there, it's all rain water has to be, all rain runoff has to be contained within your own parcel. So if you're another lot, you can't redirect it onto your neighbor's parcel or otherwise. But in the cities, or mainly cities, usually see a slanting of the driveways out towards the rain gutter systems, then take it. But with the systems that we have in the city, a lot of that directly flows into the river immediately after that. So when this was passed, you know, we might have, it offered us the opportunity to add in some of these controls that are typical in other communities, such as like rain gardens and green space buffers, that can collect the rain water, allow it to naturally dissipate, or at least to a lesser extent, without that rapid runoff that then, you know, can be harmful to the ecosystem.
So when we're dealing with parking lots, does this ordinance, is this something that would be required for all parking lots in Manistee?
No, so if you had a big enough parcel and you were not over the lot coverage amount, you could just keep the parking lot as is. So if you had a large parcel and you put in a parking lot, you wouldn't have to put these in if, as long as you didn't go over that percentage of whatever of lot coverage, so. And if you did, and.
Still the other, the existing language.
Right, and if you have an existing parking lot and you're just doing maintenance, not expanding it, you don't have to do anything either.
And currently, if you have over 10 spaces, you're required to have a certain amount of landscaping. It just doesn't address stormwater right now.
So a lot of it was like, so if you're bringing in a new parking lot and you have over 10 spaces already in the city, you're required to put in green spaces. What we're saying is like, hey, let's utilize these spaces to capture the rainwater instead of just putting bushes. And, you know, you can offset your costs then to give you more spaces. Now, a lot of our parking lots don't have these green spaces, and because they're old and they're existing. But that's been in the, the parking requirements have been in there. Pedestrian walkways, green spaces have been in there since at least 2017, I would say.
And didn't we require green space and runoff for all the parking lots on the Arthur Street overlay district?
Yeah, so for all your marijuana facilities out there, if you look at the one, we actually had them rip up parking. It was the Wellflower. They have the two green space areas there in the parking lot, and then the one major one up front that their sign sits in, those are all retention areas that blend in rather nicely and offer a green space instead of looking over paved over parking areas. And so that was a net reduction that we were looking at when they started modifying their parking lot. We said, okay, we'll work with you and we'll do this, but that was part of, you know, their special use permitting. This would just make it a requirement, or not a requirement, excuse me, an option for an existing person that wanted to put in a parking lot is, hey, if you can't, I'm sorry, if you can't, if you're, if you want to put in additional parking, we're just requesting that you have a net loss to your rain, your rainwater, so. Now, the offset of that is they might not be able to put in as much parking they want, as they want, but they're still required already to do the landscaping on it. So they were going to lose parking, where the days of just allowing a flat parking spaces in the city have been gone from at least 2017 to where landscapes and other things are supposed to be implemented into those. So, you know, we're just trying to give them more options available to them. We realize that, okay, that might have been strict, but even within the district of this one individual, I think we've talked about like parking's not even a requirement, but, you know, so we just try to be flexible to help them. And when you're applying these massive things citywide, you know, it's, you're trying to get flexible to the residents, but you also want to try to be, you know, respectful to what's existing as well.
Amy, have any questions?
No, I'm.
And just on lot coverage, there have been instances where people have looked to do additions on very small lots, and we've told them that they've already exceeded their lot coverage and they're not allowed to do it. So this isn't the first time that something like this has happened. It's happened in the city before, especially in your small lots where they're like, they wanted to, you know, fill their entire lot. And this was just with building prior to this, and, you know, we had to tell them they weren't allowed to do that because of the lot coverage. And it's just so we don't end up with concrete everywhere or buildings that fill up the entire parcels and there's no spaces in between the housing. Yeah, so with a lot of historical district that we have here, and a lot of historical houses with these small parcel sizes, we realize it seems like extreme, but this is, it's pretty common, honestly.
Yeah, then you're talking parking lots and hotels. Will this take care of the problem of the individual, but the hotel?
Uh, the, um, the Milwaukee House?
Yeah.
I, I hope so.
I mean, we had pretty, uh, tore us down pretty hard in the paper, you know?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I will say that, um, we're trying to be flexible. The, it's really hard to help, um, somebody when you haven't seen a site plan. So we have yet to receive a site plan. Hopefully we'll get one and that will help him address some of his issues.
Well, if I might correct it also, he had stated that he was, came before us. Has he come before us?
I've never seen him.
I have not seen him either. I mean, I just, yeah, okay. So I know what kind of person we're dealing with already. But yeah, he, uh, kind of wrote us down pretty hard. Anyhow, that was my question and hopefully it'll, uh, cover his, uh-
If anybody would-
Thing I got, thing I got a question on a little bit. You're talking about the, uh, landscape bounds and buffers. Now, if we come across the pervious asphalt, how would that affect in there?
Yeah, if it's, if it's allowed to allow the, the seepage through and like, uh, we can-
Then that would count as a buffer for it.
They're good. I mean, you saw, you also see this, like a lot of people want to put in like, um, additions to their driveways and this is really popular in like the UK where you get those impervious or you get those pavers that, um, you can plant dirt in and plant seed and grass in them. And then they offer as like an area for you to park on, like a, a motorhome or something like that, but it's still allow grass to come through and stuff like that. So, um, that's another possibility, uh, those are utilized. Um, you also see like those rollout, um, they're like a gravel bed with like a rollout. It's kind of like a fencing type and then they fill them with grass and stuff like that. And then that also acts as like another area. So allow the seepage to go through with, um, without allowing the rapid runoff. It's really the rapid runoff you're trying to prevent.
Yeah.
What is the allowable lot coverage? What is the ratio?
It depends on the district.
Okay.
I think they're between forty and sixty for the most part.
Thirty-five and, thirty-five and a hundred.
Oh, oh, because of C three?
C three is a hundred percent.
Yeah, you can have complete build out in the C three. Which is, you know-
It's pretty common.
The downtown area is usually like that. Unless there's a, a requirement for, um, like you see it with, when you're talking about like form-based code, where they might require you to have a green space in front of your building, um, but then allow you to put like siding or like outdoor impervious pavers or something like that for like outdoor seating. So, I mean, there's other ways. It really depends on how you design it. But in, in traditional older C three business districts, um, a hundred percent lot coverage is usually allowable.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Move along to the public comment on, um, lot coverage rain gardens. So if there's anybody that'd like to make a comment, name an address, please, and you have up to five minutes.
Marty Spalding, two fifty-nine River Street, the Milwaukee House. I haven't been in front of you before and I haven't claimed that I have. You must've, might've misinterpreted something. This is my third appearance, however, before a city body in as many months. I'm just trying to accomplish a couple of projects that are permitted uses by right under the zoning ordinance. It shouldn't be necessary. It's become an unwelcome burden for me. I'd like to speak on two of the agenda items tonight being the proposed corrections to text amendment Z twenty-one eighteen and the adjustment to the fee charged for filing an appeal with the zoning board of appeals.
We're still, we're still in public comment for this one.
Public comment on the rain garden lot coverage.
These relate to that. The comments relate to that. First, let me say that I appreciate the city acknowledging that the text amendment has unintended consequence. As regarding the text amendment or the, uh, ordinance change that's proposed tonight, uh, I feel that, uh, the prior one should be rescinded entirely. Let me tell you why. First of all, it's redundant. Parking limits and requirements are already laid out in section five fourteen. The design of paved parking areas and storm water management is already covered in great detail in the zoning ordinance under sections five oh three, five fourteen, and twenty-two oh three. There already exists setback and development standards for every property in the city in the sections that cover each zoning district. Why do we need a redundant layer on top of what's already there? Second, it contains conflicting language and it's poorly drafted. The proposed language delegates approval of the management of stormwater designed to the zoning administrator where section five oh three, which already exists, places that in the domain of the city engineer. Texted amendment Z twenty-one eighteen prohibits paved parking but exempts paved driveways. There really isn't any difference between the two. A paved area that's next to a house is both a driveway and a parking spot. Third, this is unnecessary. I'm not sure how the public is, is served by restricting the use of their backyards for patios or decks that are a long way from a watershed. We already have setbacks. What are the community values aspects of telling somebody they can't put a deck which is pervious in their backyard? Do we need to penalize every property owner in town because one person decided to pave their entire yard? There is a simpler fix for this. Limit paved or impervious parking to the maximum number of parking spaces already permitted by the ordinance. No other town, the size and character of Manistee in our region has adopted this restrictive language. I've just given the chair the exact quotes. I copied and pasted from the zoning ordinances, from the definitions in the, I didn't go looking at other sections. This, these are the definitions of lot coverages in Luddington, Big Rapids, Reed City, Clare, Gladwin, Midland, Bay City, Tawa City, East Tawas, Cadillac, Houghton Lake, Grayling, Gaylord, Alpena, Roger City, Sheboygan, Mackinac City, St. Agnes, Sioux St. Marie, Marquette, Houghton, Escanaba, Potoski, Elk Rapids, Sutton's Bay, and Frankfurt. You know how many of those include paved areas in their lot coverage definition in their ordinance? Zero. None of them. Tonight's amendment should be tabled. Amendment Z twenty-one eighteen should be rescinded. All that's necessary here is to amend section five fourteen to limit paved and impervious surfaces in a residential district to the maximum number of spaces allowed in that district. Everything else is already covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Name and address, please.
Jen Teller, seven one two Harbor Drive, Manistee. What a wonderful presentation that man just made and how important it is to move forward with flexibility for the issues that he's facing. That Milwaukee House has been down there empty for how long? And it's a beautiful building and we're just waiting for someone like this man to sink that money into it and make it a real gem for Manistee. So I, I just hope that you'll move forward to allow him to do what he needs to do, to get his building open, up and running and not have to spend all that money more to accomplish what he needs to do. You were talking about the issues of blocks and grasses in between them and all of that. It can all be solved. So we just appreciate the fact that you're going to take this under consideration and take some of his ideas and incorporate them to make that move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name and address.
Mark Sandstedt, five oh three Seventh Street. Um, I'm neighboring property to the Milwaukee House. Again, I would ask for flexibility as well. We're in kind of a gray area there where the Peninsula District is kind of still part of the Central Business District. Makes perfect sense in the Central Business District, a hundred percent lot coverage. Look at our downtown, it's obvious. My building, um, I'd be out of compliance. My, I, my building has been there for a long, long time. Steggy had that backlot paved probably in the sixties. Robin Hogan would not be able to build the addition on the boyer agency. Seems ludicrous to me. It's beautiful. Would you rather lose that business to the downtown district because they can't expand to meet their customers' needs? So I guess I would just ask for flexibility. I'm not, I don't think Marty's looking for special treatment. I think he's looking for fair treatment. And I think when we have people that can invest their money anywhere and they choose Manistee, we need to help them along, um, whether they're big or small. So that's how, all I would ask is just keep an open mind and keep flexibility because once that ordinance is in place as a citizen or a property owner, it just becomes a lot more difficult to, uh, to render a, a good result. So that's all I ask and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close, uh, the public hearing and move along to public comment on the general related items. You can approach the podium, name and address, have up to five minutes.
This is the third one? This is the-
Public comment.
Parcel number eight.
Go ahead.
Yes, Jen Teller, seven one two Harbor Drive. Uh, I'd just like to go back to the view shed issue and I, um, I just wanted to say that if you go ahead and put that in there, like, like it's written, could you please consider adding the words exemption for view shed issues to go to the tree commission? I, I don't see how it can stay in planning. You know, it's a tree. It belongs in the tree commission. There is no policy for limb trims and we're in the twenty-first century. It's different than what it was before. People come here for view. They want water. They want to see what Manistee has to offer. So we're just asking for the same flexibility that this fellow is asking for and not be so rigid with a absolute no, you cannot deal with view shed. Like you said, some things just don't make sense. And this is one of those issues with view shed. When you're surrounded by water, um, it only makes sense for the people that live on Sixth Avenue, for the people that live across the Marina over there, they have view sheds everywhere. We really need to consider what the people of Manistee really need. Just like Linda Beaton said, she's there to serve the needs and desires of the residents of Manistee. That was August fourth, twenty-one. And I'm said, I was saying right on Linda, you know, this is how we need to treat our people with flexibility and understanding of what the current needs are. Just like the city council said, hey, somebody from Florida wrote a letter and wanted to have golf carts on the roads of Manistee. It went through. Flexibility on things that weren't being dealt with before. So I'm just hoping that, that you will at least, like he said, table the issue until you're able to, uh, get the, um, the whole policy together that will work for more than, will, will work for everybody that has, has that issue. So, and I hope you'll take the time to read the, the three policies that, that, uh, I brought from other towns and the one that was crafted for Manistee. A simple one, a medium difficulty one, and one that will cover everything. And then the people that have issues, like I say, from, um, building to building, that belongs in the building department. Where you already have the issues addressed for view. I mean, you know, like you can't, you can't deny someone who's on a private piece of property just because they have a view obstruction. You can't, that person cannot say in the back, well, now you can't build on your property. That makes no sense. You already have it in planning and, uh, zoning restrictions and all of that. So that's why I say there's two different ways to deal with view sheds and I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ken Armour, two fifty-four River Street. I, uh, I'm trying to understand the, the coverage thing that you're talking about. I, uh, haven't followed it so much, but I would also like, uh, as much as you can to work with some flexibility. I'm really excited to try and get help, get whatever way I can to get that Milwaukee House open. You see as you're entering the, uh, Peninsula District, between the boyers and the other buildings there, I mean, they're absolutely beautiful. And I have that dinosaur there that I'm trying to, uh, resurrect from the streetscape. And the more people that we can get down there to, uh, actually see the opportunities and what's down there, I think will help everybody out. I've been really working hard with the chamber and everybody else, trying to get some tenants to, to, to do something in the front of the streetscape there, the ironworks, which, you know, the historical value's incredible. The whole Peninsula District is beautiful. So anything, uh, I'm open to helping any way I can too. Anything you guys can see to help, uh, that entryway that's going to bring people down there. I mean, we're, uh, you know, we're all fighting for the same thing. So.
Thank you.
I still had a minute and a half left and I didn't want to be off topic.
Name and address again?
Marty Spalding, two fifty-nine River Street. Uh, regarding the filing fee increase for the zoning board of appeals, uh, I, I do in fact have a site plan developed for Milwaukee House. In December is when I found out that the month before, that the definition of lot coverage had been changed and all of a sudden it was pretty much a moot point. I had a site plan developed for a parking lot that I probably got twenty thousand dollars wrapped up in the site plan and I couldn't use it anyway. Did every, both of these projects that I have going on here were discussed in detail with the prior zoning administrator. He was gone when I went to submit my site plan for the gas station property across the street from the House of Flavors, uh, which took me ten months to get approval for. It required me to go to the zoning board of appeals because the zoning administrator doubled and then tripled down on denying my application, which the zoning board of appeals agreed with me on as far as interpretation goes. My comment is that the zoning board of appeals charges you seven hundred and fifty dollars simply for appealing and having a meeting and they want that now to be increased to twelve hundred dollars. That to me seems to be an awful deterrent to your average person in this town that wants to appeal a decision of the zoning administrator, especially where that decision is incorrect. If, if the zoning administrator is wrong, shouldn't the zoning board of appeals fee be completely waived? Why would we charge somebody twelve hundred dollars that's right? Why would you charge them anything at all? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment on agenda related items. Ready? Move along to new business, view shed amendment. Question? Anything?
If I might, uh-
Roger, by all means.
Yeah, to keep the ball rolling, considering the, uh, evidence that we got today, that I'd like to see if we maybe could table it for some more research. Until we come up with a final point, I guess, think we give it some, if we have to flexibility. I didn't realize we were just speaking about a problem. So that's my thought.
Okay. Roger, looking at tabling?
On the view shed?
On the view shed?
You know, I, again, I, I want to clarify something for myself and, and maybe for the audience. As I read this, what I thought the intent was is that we were simply putting in the definition of what view shed was into the ordinance, number one, correct?
Yep, that's in, that's-
Just because it, it, view shed literally was not mentioned anywhere in our ordinance prior to this, correct?
Correct.
So we were identifying a, something that's been brought up in public just, just to have a definition for it. Now, the, the second part, the second portion of this where we say, uh, nothing in the ordinance is intended to protect view shed, does that in any way, uh, dissuade anyone from still proceeding if they have a, an issue with view shed? And what would their process and procedures be?
So, me, um, that wasn't the question I thought you were going to ask, so I was thrown off there. And I got Mike staring at me because he wants to say something. No? So this, this, um, section Q here where it says nothing in this ordinance is intended to protect view sheds, that's already the case. There, there is not, there, there is nothing in, in, your, it, view sheds are not protected. What I- In the ordinance, correct?
Right.
What this, in the directive I, I thought I received was that we were just trying to make it crystal clear that that was the case, that, that we wanted to fortify what already exists. So this really isn't a change as much as it is-
We were taking the ambiguity out of the stuff.
Exactly.
Right. That's what we were doing.
And Zach, they could still, people could still go to the tree commission and request a trim based on a tree health or something like that.
Absolutely, yeah. The, the, notoriously- Notoriously, the tree commission has shied away from, they don't, view sheds is not what they do, deal with. It's tree health, tree safety, if there's a blight, if there's a limb that's out, that's going to fall, things like that. If it is leaning towards a house, maybe, that's a request that often gets received.
And I do think that Jen, you know, talked about two different issues here, Mrs. Teller, I'm sorry. This is the later, I think, of the two, where we're talking about property rights, where, you know, for instance, since we're talking about the Peninsula District so much, the Milwaukee House, the Boyer Agency wasn't there and they wanted to have that view shed of the river. And somebody put a two-story building up in front of them. The zoning ordinance wanted to protect them for saying like, hey, you violated my view shed.
No, that's right.
So that's, I think, what was the idea behind this. Where you've seen like, you know, Onakama where that actually happened, that's why they did it, where two people civilly went after each other and this was just kind of trying to lay that out clearly. As far as trimming or other things, I think that that is, you know, something that is the purview of the tree commission, you know, and what their guidelines are. But this just clearly lays out that the zoning ordinance is not the place for that and that we're protecting, or we're not protecting the view shed of individual property right owners. Is that right, Zach?
I think that's fair to say, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But there would still be a recourse for a citizen if they had a concern or an issue, a major issue.
In what way? So like, if you're talking about a trim, the city could always-
Or the planting, let's say we decide, you know, that the city decides that they want to do a tree buffer and plant trees all the way across to stop the sand from shifting. And I'm just arbitrarily saying that.
Or, I mean, it's very common, you guys have talked about many times in the city, about a boardwalk, it's common to have trees planted there. If there was something that they would like, requested a trim, the zoning ordinance wouldn't protect that. So if they wanted through the tree, the city at that time could look to adopt a policy or a police power ordinance that basically addressed that, or the tree commission could adopt it. It would not be something that the zoning ordinance would adopt. This is basically saying like, you, your view shed is not protected via the zoning ordinance. So if you did have a problem with the city planting trees, you couldn't dare say, you've reduced my property value because I can no longer see the river. I am suing you. This is clearly laying that out, saying, this is not the case, at least via the zoning ordinance. Now, if there's something that council or the tree commission wanted to take up as far as a tree trimming policy, that would be something that they would have to look into. But this is clearly laying out, as far as the way I'm looking at it, and I'm just, I mean, Zach wrote it, so I'll ask him.
No, that's entirely correct.
So it's basically laying out those, that groundwork that says, this is not purview to the zoning ordinance, which in the past, the city attorney has said, it's already, you know-
It's already-
It's already in there because it doesn't say that it does, which, but this is just laying it out clearly for everyone that says, hey, it's not protected via zoning.
Hey, you cleared up the ambiguous language that was in there and just made it into simple language that the layperson can understand. You don't need a lawyer to explain everything on it.
Right, I mean, when you say, nothing in the ordinance, you know, I think that-
It's a simple, straightforward, covered, redone.
The conversation tonight is really into another, another commission that the zoning ordinance or the planning commission doesn't regulate. So, but it was really just like, hey, here's what a view shed is. In fact, the definition that Mrs. Teller commented on was one that we looked at, but it's usually on that, it's more of a grand scale. What you're seeing, you might also see like a view shed protection in that definition when you think about the lookout or, yeah, well, even a bigger one, I was thinking locally, Arcadia lookout, where you have a view shed of Lake Michigan from there that you might want to protect via that. So, and then you could have view shed protection within that as like an overlay and there are things like that. But typically you don't see residential view sheds like this protected unless the city lays it out. I mean, I think Seaside, Florida does it where, I think that's the name of it.
The one we looked at.
Where they actually have a view shed ordinance, where within the residential area, they basically stagger them to where, but it explicitly says what the property builders can do and that's a completely planned city by planners. So they knew what they were doing when they went to do it. When you have a historic city, it's very difficult, especially when you want development, to sit there and say, okay, you know, we're going to protect this but not that. When you're talking view shed, because you want those Riverside and Lakeside parcels to develop if they're, if they're commercial or residential, because they're a larger tax base and you get them infilled. I mean, nobody wants just an empty lot. I mean, yeah, it's beautiful if you have the view, but at the same time, if I purchased it, I'd want to build on it and not have to end up civilly in court saying, I violated your view shed. So it's just another thing that said, hey, we're going to clearly lay this out. As far as the other concerns, I think that is something more in purview to the tree commission. So, or city council, if city council wanted to address, tell them to address something like that.
So if, I'm just trying to clarify this then. So if we pass this language, the tree commission still has full authority to be able to address trimming trees-
Public trees.
And the public use side, which was submitted, I haven't had a chance to read fully, but they could still make changes to their policy and bring it to city council.
Right, I mean, you're talking, you're talking two different powers here and, but when you talk to the tree commission also, you have to realize, it's public trees. So like, trees in public parks or public areas or public trees as far as in-
Right of ways.
Like right of ways. So outside of that, this would protect like, you know, individual property owners or anything like that. Or in the case of like, the new motel, you know, not saying that you couldn't go up additional stories, like it would say, hey, you know, this is, this is obviously not the case, it's laid clearly out here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If you guys would like us to massage the language more, we can, if you want to read over what they said, we can too. I mean, there's, there's nothing wrong with tabling a decision to get more information.
We just got the pamphlet or the information, I don't know, he keeps talking his own neck of a state. I mean, why don't we get down to the roots, root of the problem here? Is that where it came from or what?
No, I think it originally came from the tree commission requesting a definition and, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to hand it off to Zach here because he was, he's more familiar with it, so.
So, I mean, not even in regards to the tree commission yet, but as planners, we look, we do a lot of, you know, internal research, we put in a lot of time before it gets anywhere. So I understand everybody does research, but it's a little bit different when a planner's looking at another planner's work. My goal is always to make it as simple as possible. That's not always the case. I'm sure you guys are aware that, you know, there's sometimes languages, it's written by lawyers for lawyers. My goal is to make language for everyone to read, because it shouldn't take an expert for us to run a city, essentially. So, you know, the language is meant to be easy to read. We've looked at a lot, a lot of other communities, different states, within our own community, within Onakama, with different issues like this and this is, this is what we felt the best thing was that came forward, so.
I mean, when we, when we really look at, like, and you talk about view sheds within the city, name one. I mean, aside from the park, which is a public space regulated by the tree commission, is there another one that's not, has private land in front of it?
I think the condos zone on Fifth Avenue, when they were built, we had it.
No, it's not. No, this is, this is- This is between the commission and staff.
When we're talking, usually talking on like view sheds, there's usually like an overarching area, like, you look at like, you know, mountainous areas or public spaces. So, you know, it is fair to say like, hey, the park is a view shed to an extent, but there's, there's also no current development or any, in with the way the park charter's written, I believe any, any future development that will, that will take place in a, in those spaces. So like, when you were talking about like trimming or trees or something like that, you're really, that's the tree commission. I mean, so like, you know, but what if suddenly you guys wanted to put up a, you know, another pavilion or something, a block something, or a two-story, you know, I don't know, whatever you guys want down there. And then you, you define view shed in a different way. You have to be very careful because once you start defining these things, you basically, especially in the zoning ordinance, you can open it up. So, I mean, Zach is, you know, it's pretty cut and dry, nothing in this ordinance would protect view sheds in defining view sheds, but, you know, if you start like, this is a view shed or this is a protected view shed and you guys go that route, then that becomes a protected view shed. So, you know, the zoning ordinance, it basically doesn't address the view shed portion, this is laying out crystal clear. I'm not trying to say that like, there shouldn't be view sheds that are protected, but we have park spaces, but literally those are for everyone and the only thing that are on them are trees and pavilions and some slides and such, but, except for over on the other side, we had like the fish cleanery, so, I mean, it's, you have to be very careful when you define these things as far as, especially in the zoning ordinance, what the view shed is and how it's protected. So when we're saying, hey, we should protect these via the zoning ordinance, you know, I, I'm very cautious on that. I'm very much, you know, unless it's a historic or, you know, an open park like Yosemite or something like that, those are the typical areas, I think, that you see a broader view shed application. Not, you know, not a public, like not a public area where, you know, we have the tree commission that's really responsible for most of the stuff there and then public infrastructure that's available that well. I mean, but, like I said, if you guys want more time, you can always table it.
Roger, mention the table, table this, further discussion. What's the feelings of the commission?
All right, I'll go first. I'm not in favor of tabling it. What we're doing is just, as Zach said, clarifying and claiming what's already in the ordinance. I don't see why we should have to table it.
Well, I'm just saying-
The other issues aren't up to us. It's, it's nothing that we should be dealing with.
All right.
I agree with Pam because there's other issues fondered to jurisdiction of the tree commission, not this or this ordinance at all.
That's pretty clear.
All we're doing is just clarifying what's already there and saying that we're not going to be protecting it because it could open us up to so much more issues.
Right. Very much point blank.
And I believe the, our lawyer has already stated that it changes nothing, that it is, it's just clarifying, it doesn't change anything that's currently in the ordinance.
The lawyer has stated that, so I'm not in favor of tabling it.
Nick?
Not to table.
Not to table?
Go forward with the vote.
All right. With that, take a motion. Make the motion, we accept the definitions and provisions that has been presented. I'll go first. Second, Pam, any further discussion? Anne? Roger?
No, it's all right, go ahead.
Okay. Did we take a vote? Was that a-
I think that's the next one.
We're waiting for Mark.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I think the commission has stated what the, what it is and would like to have some review. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smeenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
No.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved.
Yeah, that's fine.
Lot coverage, rain garden amendment. Is there a motion on this?
Well, this is one that I think we may want to table because of the conflicting ordinances and the redundancies in the ordinances that were brought up by Mr. Spalding, unless you are already aware of those and can address all of those.
I believe you guys got a handout that handles all the other ordinances in great detail, showing that-
No, no, I'm talking about the ones that he mentioned, about the 503, the 514 and the 2203.
Yeah, we'd have to spend staff time, this is the first we're hearing of it, so.
Okay, that's, that was-
I mean, at the same time with, with what the, the actual amendment is, is offering more flexibility, we can look into those other things if you would like, but really this is, this is an amendment to offer flexibility to property owners that are installing parking lots that if they put in rain garden type structures that they don't have to meet the lot coverage. So I think what we're talking is two different things here. What you're saying is, you want us to review it on these other redundancies, which we can, but the amendment on the table is truly to offer greater flexibility for landowners to accomplish what they want as long as they meet certain criteria. I don't know if, if that matters to you, you can always table it, but I just wanted to clarify that.
And is this, this is citywide, correct?
That is correct.
This is not just for the Peninsula District?
Yep.
Yeah, looking at this, where I'm getting it, it's being added to the ordinance, like you said, for the additional flexibility. It's a separate standalone thing, other than the other issues that are in the ordinance that can be looked at yet.
Right.
No issue in the ordinance.
And I think the important thing to remember here is that there already are requirements, if they're bigger than 10 parking spaces, that you have to have a certain amount of landscape and buffering and things like that. So we're saying, hey, use that, use that space that you already have to have and then we can waive it. So really, it's really helping with the flexibility.
And I mean, we could still go back and address these other, these other issues that have come up, but I would hate to see an amendment not go to council that's offering greater flexibility when we're looking at something completely different.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you guys can still look into it, see where that redundancy stuff is and bring that to us at a later date.
Yeah, we could do that, we haven't reviewed it.
This is the expanding, you're actually expanding stuff with this one.
Right.
All right. I'm motioning we accept this addition to the ordinance. Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second that one.
By Roger. Any further discussion? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smeenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved. Moving along to zoning board of appeals, increase from $750 to $1,200. Is there a motion?
I'd like to speak a little bit if I could, please. Okay, so I can't tell you the exact year, but a few years ago, it was before my time, there was an increase in fees for special use permits for planned unit developments. I'm not sure why, but the amount for the zoning board of appeals was kept the same. Looking at other communities, they're all in line with those special use permits, those PUDs, they're all in that, in that fee schedule. This is something the city manager and I have been working on and it just kind of helps keep everybody honest with ZBA requests, so. That said, it's, the city fees for, like I said, special use permits, planned unit developments, yes, they're more than the surrounding communities, but the city, not that they have to be, but it's pretty common that your city centers or your population centers in an area are going to have a higher, a little bit higher fee on things like that. So for their ZBA fees to be the same as the, you know, the out counties is, it's a little bit unusual, so.
So this is not out of the way for anybody, this increase?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear.
Increase from $750 to $1,200 is not out of the way for any, I mean, it's a normal increase.
It would be, it would be consistent with surrounding areas, yeah.
What do we charge for planned unit development?
$1,200.
So we're just bringing it up to the same par. This is also going to make sure that the person is in, fully intent that they want to do this and not just throwing frivolous things out.
Well, but $750 is still, it's not frivolous amount. I would add, though, I have a, a question. How many, uh, ZBAs have we done in a year? How many are we talking about?
We did, we did one in the last year, I think, two the year before, and I think it was, I think from looking back at the records, it was three before that.
But, but then it's not like people are over, are, are-
No, I mean, they have legitimate cause, uh, legitimate claim, I think you'd be willing to spend that amount of money. I know it sounds like a lot, but-
It's a $500 increase is a lot, I think.
But, but when's the last time it was raised, though? I mean, it sounds like it hasn't been raised for a long time.
It, it's been at least five years.
There you go, makes sense.
It's probably been addressed more slowly.
100 would be four?
Yeah.
It could have been.
Yeah. Well, Roger should-
Yeah, well, I should, but I'm not-
You don't remember that?
Well, I can, I can remember when we wrote it.
I, I thought it was, it was on the clay tab of 100, Kizzle doing it.
When we first started, we didn't even charge, we'd give them for nothing. They'd kind of load a GBA.
Well, that, that, that's the counterpoint to that, is people just take a shot then. Um, we see that in the out counties quite a bit, when the fees are too low.
Yeah.
People just come in and say, yeah, I'll, I'll risk it, and then, um, if, if you don't have a trained ZBA, which I don't think is the case in the city, um, you can see, uh, when a ZBA makes a decision, it is very far-reaching. So now they've set the precedent for the community, until different standards are laid out via, you know, maybe a zoning ordinance rewrite or something else. So, when they make a decision, it is, it is paramount that, uh, well, first of all, that they're, they're, uh, consistent, and that they get it right.
Yeah.
Or, um, so, uh, you don't want, uh, so if you get a lot of board changeover or something like that, you can get some unprepared people on there that, that then therefore, you know, can cause trouble. Uh, I, I think it would be incorrect to state that, um, a ZBA fee is not a deterrent, um, because it is to an extent, um, you know, and I, and-
You've made it even a bigger deterrent by, by increasing it by-
I'm not saying, but like, at the same time, if, if you do have a big enough issue, I've seen communities waive the fee if they felt that they were erred, um, for them to come forward and hold a meeting, that, you know, where they-
You have the option of doing it.
I mean, you, I mean, you can always request, but like, we say, you know, like, if they say no, they say no.
Oh, wow, yeah.
You know, um, but I have seen, like, uh, out in Bear Lake, they waived a fee, I think Onakama's waived a fee before, too. Um, however, it's, it's, um, if you, it, it makes people want to work within the ordinance, as opposed to make the ordinance work for them. And-
And all the research that's being involved by the groups involved in it, it's time-consuming.
Yes.
And it, their time is not, nothing.
So when, when you start breaking it down, um, you guys are a city, depending on the parcel, um, you can spend, we charge other communities a dollar per envelope, the mailing itself, in the newspaper notice, you're talking at least a hundred, the mailing notice, let's say, you know, I don't know, a common, let's say, 40, 40 parcels are involved and within a 500 feet, depending on the area, um, then, uh, you have to pay every committee member that's there, um, you know, there, there are costs to it.
Staff time involved.
Yep, so, um, not to mention, you know, all the things that come with that, where , uh, city manager, or politicians, or, um, the, the city, um, attorney has to be involved and make their interpretation, I mean, all that costs money. So, you know, that, I think that's why, when we've, we've actually worked to increase some of the fees out, I mean, I think Bear Lake was charging $250 for a ZBA hearing, I think they raised theirs up to a thousand. Um, I could be incorrect on that, um, but it was one of them, I get them mixed up sometimes, and I apologize.
Manistee Township, or, yeah, Manistee Township, or not Manistee Township, Filer.
We don't, we don't do Filer, so I wouldn't know, but, uh, we could look up-
750 in Arcadia and Onakama.
750?
750, uh, and that's also the price of their special use permits. Um, 550 in Bear Lake, and that's the price of their special use permit as well.
Do you know Filers?
I do not know Filers.
Give it a shot.
I mean, so, you know-
I mean, they're crying about it, we know what it costs, we know, everybody gets paid for crazy things, we don't get paid. We get that $1,200 from them. I'll make a motion, we approve the increase.
Not done with discussion yet, Roger. Not done with discussion.
I mean, and-
After the motion, we can still discuss.
Yeah, and, um, well, he made a motion, I'll stop.
No, you can keep going.
I mean, you, you know, even though 1,200's on the board, you guys could recommend a lower fee, too. I mean, it's, it's just a starting point, so like, I mean-
You guys are coming from, because it's, I can equate everything you guys are doing to my line of work. When I'm requested to do an ALTA survey, I have to give a title companies, I have to do extensive courthouse research, I've got to look up every easement and everything else. Zoning board's got to do the same type of thing in there, and it is time-consuming, it costs them money to do it, and-
Uh, we don't get the money, I'm just gonna be-
No, you don't. The labor time, the labor time.
It, it keeps me away from, from the typical day-to-day stuff, yeah.
I mean, uh, it, and, um, you guys aren't seeing a lot of these, I'll be honest with you, you're really not. Um, it's usually, the ones we've seen are usually, um-
Dimensional.
Yeah, dimensional, well, they're all dimensional, but like, uh, they're usually, um, developers within like the C3s, one of the ones I've seen, like the sign over here, um, by the, um, accountants. That was one, um, man, that is like the only one I can think of.
If I could ask-
Besides Marty's.
If I ask you to get in, Mike, then how come that individual from that hotel, whatever, said that he dealt with the zoning administrator and ended up with the ZBA?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that was Marty, so like, he, he recently did. This was, this was on a different property, um, um-
And then so obviously you're, you went and-
I'm, I'm not the zoning administrator, Zach, so.
And so he went to the ZBA after you said no?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, because we didn't, I mean-
I mean, so there's always a process, that's the great thing about zoning. Like, you know, if we say no, or we interpret it something a certain way, as professionals, um, there's still a route for you to go forward and say, hey, but you better be sure that you want to go that route, so that's where the fee comes in.
Yeah.
And it's because of the staff time that's involved in it, it is, it's a lot of staff time, so, um, and then you, a lot of the preparation, too, I mean, like, you're talking packets, site visits, um, research on other communities, I mean, there's a lot of things that can go into this, um, you know, but, like I said, it doesn't, doesn't have to be 1,200, could be a lesser amount, so, um, the reason you said 1,200 is because that's what your special use permit is, or your PUD is.
Yeah, we're just matching, just matching fees.
Yeah, I don't imagine the fees. I don't think any common, keep folk around here, will have the $1,200 to deal with, if you're going to come in with money, you know, they know, what the hell is here?
I mean, so to be perfectly honest with you, when a variance comes in, nine out of 10 of them shouldn't be granted. Like, it's, there's supposed to be a hardship shown.
Oh, yeah.
And, and a hardship cannot be, it's going to cost me money.
Yeah, right.
It, there is, there is very clear-
Unique land features.
It's got to be something unique to your land, usually, and then there's interpretations, which is a different thing, where you disagree, and that's what Marty got, was an interpretation.
Yeah.
Um, but, at the same time, uh, when you're talking variances, it's usually like, you, you own a parcel, let's say, out on Lake Michigan, and you, you can't meet the setbacks, um, because you have to meet the bluff setback set by the state of 60 feet, and you're going to have to go five feet into your, um, into your setback, let's say. You're still able to keep, you know, the 10 feet separation between buildings, if your neighbor was a real, built right on their property line setback, um, you could go to the ZBA and say, that's my hardship is, I have a bluff here. And that, that wouldn't, okay, I would say, go forward, I think you have a shot, heck, I'll support that one.
Something enjoyed by your-
Yeah.
-by another landlord.
That, it, you can enjoy because of the, of the complexities of your parcel.
Right.
And, but, you know, a lot of these variances that go through, um, you know, shouldn't, but it's an appeal process that, uh, you know, it, it takes time and energy, so, I mean, I-
Sometimes going through the appeal process, they're going to find stuff that they never thought of, say, oh, that's why I can't do it.
Right.
Most generally, when they deal with us, and the answers we give them are very clarified and, uh, to the point of, uh, legal, the legalities of it, where they don't have to go to a ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, when they come to the office and we say, hey, this is why you can't do it, it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, right.
Very few, like I said, I think, I think I can think of two. Two ZBA cases in four years?
Yeah.
I can't think of another one.
No, probably, probably not.
And so, but that's, I'll be honest, that's great for the city, but it's not that way in all the other communities. Um, the ZBAs are not as strong, they're not as educated, and they don't understand what they're granting, um, and it can get out of control-
The ramifications of it, yeah.
-real quick. In fact, that's, that's why in some of the communities out there, uh, they're rewriting their zoning ordinance, because they realize that they've messed up.
Yeah.
Well, with that, is there a motion to, um, for, for, to pass that at $1,200, reduce it, or keep it at 750?
I'll make a motion, we keep it at, or raise it to the $1,200 and be done.
Okay. Is that out there? Set at 12? Second?
Yeah, that's what they want, $1,200.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's somewhat ill-timed, and, and, uh, I can't help but feel that way. Uh, I think it, it comes right after a, somebody brings a case to the ZBA, and it's overturned, and then the next week, we're saying, well, we're going to make it 500, we're going to charge $500 more. To me, it, I just have that feeling that we're, we're, we're making it difficult for people to complain, and we're making, we're, we're trying to use money to dissuade people from using the authorities and the possibilities. Not that that is the case, but because of timing, that's, that's kind of how you, I see it fall.
Well, we, we have to cover our costs-
Yeah.
-all the way around the block.
It would have had to come in sometime or another.
Bob's a, Bob's a good indicator of, of it, it's, it's parallel.
Yeah, because, uh, my cost, the doing that stuff goes up, it's got to come somewhere.
But I wouldn't, and, and again, if it was coming in as part of our normal adjusting our prices that we do, then I wouldn't have any objection to it, but since we've singled this out-
You learn a lot when you go through it, you know, um, in, in the city manager, I had to discuss this, and, you know, frankly, the ZBA is, is, to be honest, in the backburner of my mind, it's not something I deal with a whole lot, so, this isn't, this isn't something that I looked at, and so, I saw it, and, and he asked me, well, is that normal for, for the surrounding areas, and I said, well, I'll look into it. He and I talked about it, uh, the 1,200 seemed to fit in line with, you know, where everybody else is at, so.
Zach, this still has to go to, um, city council, correct, for final approval?
Correct.
Yeah.
And they, and they could down, they could downsize it on their end, too.
Or they could just say they're not going to do it, so-
We're, we're just recommending it.
Yes.
Right, and-
That's the part that I, I have-
They could adjust it if they want, yeah, that's true.
But, again, this is something that should have been, been changed before, and it just wasn't caught.
Right, and, but, but we normally have a annual readjustment of all of our, we go through all of our prices-
Stuff still slips through cracks.
Budget process. Well, but it was, apparently, it, it was decided, some, somebody had made the decision not to, to increase it for-
Or one that slipped through the cracks.
Or it slipped through, but what I'm saying is, we still have a process where we go through all of our prices, and we make that determination, I think it would be more appropriate for us to address it then, than to single it out, uh-
You could make the recommendation to address it at that time as well, um, with the recommendation, if that's what you guys want to, to increase it at that time. So, I mean, there's, you can make your motion however you want.
Yeah.
If you guys want to, um, say, we recommend an increase to this at that time, that would be another way.
Yeah, basically, it's saying, we're just recommending an increase, and it's not going to be approved by city council.
Yeah, city council still has to approve it.
As it, with, with our, our, during our normal budget process, adjusting-
Council has to say.
Yeah, we're just recommending-
Yeah.
So, so just, just a, uh, I'm just looking for clarification for our sake. Um, Mick, are you saying that not to recommend anything, and then just let them naturally adjust it, or are you saying to recommend it, that they, they increase, is there no recommendation, and just say adjusted at that time?
My recommendation is that if we are doing a recommended increase, that we include it in our annual, um, price increases, or price adjustments, and not as a singled, singling it out as a, as completely separate issue.
Right, and you-
That's on the council.
That's on the council, we're, we're just making a recommendation, we're not telling it has to go to us.
I think, Mick, if I can speak to you, I think that's what Mick's saying, is, hey, when we get to, when council gets to that point, we think it should be this. Is, is that fair?
We recommend the price, but-
Right, when, when council is ready at-
Not to have it as a separate-
Yeah.
...increase issue, that it becomes part of the total budget and price change.
Mick, do you know when you guys adjust those?
Um, probably next month, I think, is the budget, budget process, I think, starts next month.
So, this is about the time to bring the recommendation up.
Recommendation, just not have it go to a vote to-
Yeah, I would, I, I don't think it would look really well, either, I, I understand what you're saying. I think that if you make the recommendation, and then we don't, we don't, uh, put it on the, the city council's agenda until next month, when you guys are looking at it.
It becomes part of the annual-
Right, annual budget.
Okay.
All we're doing, all we're doing is making a recommendation-
That's right.
-forward to the city.
That's what we're doing.
So, with that said, is there a new motion? Or do we stay with your original motion, to increase it to 1,200? Or-
If you're all on board, you can-
I, I would amend your motion, I would amend it, yeah.
So is there amend, amendment?
Amendment, how are we amending it? I don't understand. We're either going to recommend this goes to the city, or we're not, that's my only understanding, so I'm-
Well, the amendment-
To be addressed at-
Timing.
At the budget process.
During the annual-
But it doesn't say in here anywhere that we are saying, now they have to do it.
No.
Recommend it to go up, it's up to city council to make that decision when it takes effect. We have no say-so when that takes effect.
You can recommend a time on it, though, as well, is what, is what I'm, all I'm saying. So if you-
Recommend something for next year.
You could say, 20 years from now, we recommend this, but, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you, I might forget to take that to city council.
If, if you, if the wish was, you know, wait the month, or, you know, I could find out exactly when it is, if it is next month, I could just wait and put it on the agenda then, you know, I'll just pencil my, pencil it in.
I'm looking at where, we've already gave foothold on it, we're, cuz they're gonna have a lot more stuff coming in. We've got one piece of paper in their packet to start looking at, that others can go in with it as it's coming along. They're not getting all slammed at one time.
Yeah, that's true. That's what we're gonna do tonight, making a recommendation that they use it at their, increase it at their budget meeting, whenever that is, next month, correct? Basically.
Yeah, and even their budget meeting was two or three months down the road, we're just recommending, here's what we'd like to see.
If, if that's the amendment, if that's the, the amendment.
The only reason I caution, I mean, I realize that's not an issue on this one, Bob, the only reason I caution on that is cuz I try to be efficient, and I try to get Zach to be efficient, too. So, like, if you were to recommend that, I'd be like, you put it on next month? Like, immediately, like, I'd be like, put the agenda request for him and try to get it. I know it won't make it, but let's say they, they bump something, and now suddenly it's on there. It does happen. I'm not saying it happens all the time, but something gets removed and they just put something in a filler. And if it's small like this, they might take it up. But that's, I, I don't disagree with you, and I don't think that's the case this time.
That's something I can, I can pencil in with, when I speak to Kelly, who, who runs that agenda, and tell her, this is, this is when we want it, is this date.
Well, Mick's at city council, I mean. We're pretty much covered there, I would think, no?
I'm just not excited about it.
Well, I, when I first saw this, like, wow, that's, that's a hefty increase. When you get down to the brass tacks of it, there's a lot of work that goes into it, a lot of research, mailings, everything. It's, it's some coconuts, but it's probably overdue. So, with that, did we, did we beat this one up?
I think we did as much as we could for a goddamn lousy $500 increase. For $450.
Um, so, the motion, again.
We recommend, like Bob said.
Shh, Ron, meter, your, your puzzle stuff?
You want me to freestyle this for you, Nancy?
Read the motion, Nancy, please, could you read the motion?
I think the motion is just, you got it? Okay, it's right here. I think the motion is recommendation of a.
Price increase, no, it should be a motion recommendation of the, to the city council for the price increase to 1,200 for the ZVA.
Are we good with this?
Yeah, I think so.
Just put it that way? Do you want something added to that sentence?
No, I think that should be.
You're done, Nancy, please take a roll. Oh, could I add something?
A hamburger with everything, how's that?
She'll throw that. Lucky Pam's gonna take it.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Slinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
No.
Commissioner Weiner? Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Oh, hey, Roger, would you like? You're sitting over there in the corner by yourself.
I'm sorry about that. No, I should've.
Old business?
Old business.
Have none.
Have none, okay. Public comments and communication, is there anyone left? Everybody looks at the public up there. Athene, thank you. Staff reports?
As far as news updates, I don't know if I have a whole lot for you, but I know I did wanna say, um, you know, especially lately, you know, with, with all the excitement going on, I, I have to tell you guys, I, I really appreciate the support that I've been gotten, I've received from you guys. I know I'm often the bad guy, and that's, you know, par for the course with the position, but knowing that I, that you guys understand that I, it's a necessary evil sometimes, has been very nice. So, I appreciate you guys and, and the support you've given me.
That's not a problem, Zach. You got your back.
Glad to make it out to another meeting. I feel like we're finally, or at least in, in my position, I'm finally getting my feet under me where I can, you know, start attending these things and be seen a little bit more. It is been a long process of getting Katie and Zach where I feel like they're, they're really good. I'm really happy with my staff. As always, again, I will reiterate what Zach said, I appreciate you guys' support, appreciate the questions when they come in from you guys, as well as city council, when they just have questions. You know, that helps us out a lot, because I think it puts out a lot of the fires that, you know, that may start, or, you know, the rumor mill, really, before we can address it, and just say, no, actually, this is how it works. Here you go, here's some documentation, so you can talk intelligently. You guys are very good about that, and I, I thank you very much for it.
Mike, what, what position do you actually hold now?
The county planning director.
You're a county planning director, and Zach, you're the city planning director?
The county planner and then the city zoning administrator.
City zoning administrator, okay, thank you.
Nancy, you have anything?
I'm in charge of all of them.
And Nancy cracks the whip.
She's the ringmaster.
I was afraid to ask.
Whip in the chair in your office.
She has the golden whip of truth.
It's like, it's like herding cats.
That's why she shuts her door. Did you have an opportunity to speak with Bill on training?
I did, that's right, I'm glad you brought that up. So, I did speak with the city manager about some potential training opportunities. Did I send them to you guys? It's been a long week. Yeah, so there's some APA trainings that I think would be hugely beneficial, touching on a lot of different details that Manistee is facing, and I was reading it, and I could've sworn that they were, like, they were watching us. So, Bill's working through the, the budget, so we can get everybody involved. It's a Zoom meeting, and it's in, I think, the second week of March, in the evening, so you guys can just watch it in your pajamas and, and sit back and learn a lot. I think it's, I think it's two and a half hours long, I'm sorry, but I know it's, I just, I know it's gonna be great, so.
I had an opportunity to talk to Bill a little bit today, after our meeting, and he's very, much in favor of getting training for planning, zoning, so.
It's, it's been, I know it's been at least, it hasn't happened on my watch, so when I saw the oppo, when I saw the opportunity, I, I had to try and jump on it.
Bill's the new city manager.
Yeah, it was pre-COVID, I think, the last time you guys have had formal training and.
Do you have any dates on that yet at all?
There's set dates on it.
Yeah, I think it's either the 8th or the 17th, and I'll, I'll send out, when it's all finalized, you guys will be.
And then I, I think that it's, the Zoom is probably gonna be recorded, so there might even be, like, you know, you can review it, but we'll see what they have. If we can get a recording, that'd be ideal, cuz then as, you know, we can reutilize it later, if they'll let us have it.
Go to member discussion, we'll start with the captain.
Uh, member discussion, how about the bridge? Everything going okay with the bridge?
55 Bridge?
No, the, yeah, the Maple Street.
As, as far as I've heard, everything's on schedule, so they, I know, I think they got dumped on with some snow, and the guys had to go out there and hand shovel it, but they made it work, so, good for them.
Yeah, no, I, everything's hunky-dory, Mark, thank you.
I, I do have something, and I don't want it to come off as I'm, I'm really complaining or anything. I'm really kinda sorry our, our audience left. But a couple of years ago, when we were looking at the short-term rental ordinance, we caught quite a bit of flack for looking at other communities and what they were doing, and certain people said we should be doing what's right for Manistee. And now we seem to have the opposite thing going on, with a lot of people are looking at all the other communities and expecting us to fall in line behind them. And this is a very frustrating committee to be on, but I really would like first to just keep in mind that we're trying to do what's best for Manistee, and, and not just following the herd.
Very good point.
Yeah, very good.
A couple, I think, a couple meetings ago, we discussed the, the possibility of relooking the lot coverage based on areas. And, and I'd like to.
By district, you're.
By district, yeah, and I'd really like to relook the, the Peninsula District, cuz it is a unique creature in Manistee. It is, it is so intriguing, you know, again, especially, I think, what's gonna happen with, with the Gateway Project, that other side of River Street is going to be more and more connected, and, and I, I would like to at least address some of those lot coverage issues, cuz I, I don't know what's gonna happen with that whole development on the backside of the Peninsula as well. There's a lot of questions.
I will, I always exercise caution, so the only thing I say, will say on this is, there is a lot of residential housing in that area, including Marleons. So, when people are envisioning this area, they don't take into account that residential area. So, when you're talking about lot sizes and, and lot coverage on there, we really tend to look at, like, the master plan and say, like, hey, what is it? What does it call for? It calls for form-based code, it has since it was first adopted. Form-based code is, is relatively new to a lot of communities. You can look at, like, areas like Mount Pleasant, that their entire ordinance is form-based code. It is, it has its challenges, we'll just say that. So, your master plan calls for that, for there, but when you look at, like, what people envision in those areas for, it's not a lot of residential housing, I'll say that. It's an extension of River Street. So, but when we, we look at that, we do also have to be kind of kind and courteous to those people, but really, it is an extension of River Street that you're looking at, and, you know, I don't think it's so far off when you're looking at development in those areas, to say, like, you know, why wasn't it extended out like a C3 Business District? And, and that's a question that we get over and over and over. Well, we didn't write it. The, the issue is, is they called for form-based code that was never implemented. So, I mean, I started probably, before Rob quit, I was putting together a giant packet on form-based code. And I was gonna bring it before you guys, and start trying to educate you on what it is, and try to, like, implement these zoning changes. It is a massive project. And, you know, it called in the other questions of other things, like, is this something, like, you know, an entire district that, are we covered under the contract to do? Is it something that, that the city, you know, council is gonna eventually adopt? There's, why our master plan calls for it, is there support in the community to do it? Is it gonna restrict development because developers don't know how it works? I mean, we have enough problems with HDC, and people saying, well, I don't want, somebody dictating what my materials have to be built out. That's exactly what form-based code does. It says, you can only build up to this line, you can't build anywhere else, and this is the materials you have to use. So, your master plan calls directly for it, I mean, go ahead.
To, to really synthesize form-based code, if you're not familiar, it's not based on use, it's based on appearance. So, you're, you've got your set setbacks, your height, your materials, sometimes color, number of windows, things like that. It can get very intense. But the use is, it's kind of, kind of on the afterthought.
Yeah, it's basically like no industry, industrial uses, everything else is open.
It's loosely kind of like a homeowners association, that they have their guidelines, you will do this, this, this.
Right, so, and, but then it's also setback response, like, you have to be this far off the road, you can't be further. So, like, when we talk about this, like, people are like, well, why, why isn't, why doesn't it up to, like, you know, the ironworks building just have, you know, that, that, those restrictions? Those were supposed to be the beginning of your form-based code. Those areas were supposed to map the requirements, and then, like, when you're saying, like, hey, let's address the rest of this lot coverage to meet that, what you're saying, I'm not saying you're saying this, but like, what, what was intended was this to extend into those residential areas eventually? So, yeah, in those areas, like, yeah, maybe a zero-based, lot-based coverage would be more, would be a better idea, but maybe it's, it's not so much as, if, if, you know, city council's like, or, you know, doesn't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, really, we wanna mimic what the master plan and the future land use map says, which is form-based code. So, like, if that's a direction that, you know, we wanna go, then we need to start looking at it and getting support on city council for the final adoption. So, I mean, when you say, let's look at these lot coverages in the Peninsula District, you have two different, you have two different areas. You have a commercial, which is pretty built out, and then you have a residential area, which is in line with, like, your R2 areas, where your lot coverages reflect, like, a higher percentage of that. So, it, it depends on, like, when you look at form-based code, it's like, this area wasn't intended to stay like it is, it was intended to eventually transform over to a form-based code portion. And then how do you do that? You do it, well, you want an extension of River Street, how do you do it, form-based code? The reason that River Street looks the way it does is cuz, you know, 100 years ago, everybody was like, let's build up here, make walkways, and stuff like that for a commercial area. If you wanna mimic that, you have to set guidelines and standards, because as we've seen, if you're not enforcing them, developers don't wanna do it. They wanna say, I want the maximum number of X that I can get, and I don't wanna put anything else for infrastructure, cuz I wanna benefit and make as much money as I can. So, then you set the restrictions, but then you gotta hold to them. So, you know, it's, it is something that we've looked at in detail, like, I've started putting the, the stuff together, but it, just like with any project, if it's something that city council wants us to do, or, you know, you want it to come down, we have to have their support before we go through. I learned my lesson really badly on that short-term rental, even though they said, hey, we support this when we came back through, they eventually did not support when we came back through, and, and they didn't kick it back to the planning commission for a rewrite. They, they never adopted anything.
Well, that was because of the, the pending legislation.
But the legislation could be pending for a, never happened.
So, you could, Luddington went along, and since they said, we're not waiting for the state anymore, we're, we're doing their legislation. They did their ordinances now for it, they have theirs adopted.
And I mean, really, when we looked at it, and, I mean, you know this, you helped develop it, you know, we weren't too far off in Luddington, I thought we offered more flexibility. And I thought it was right for Manistee, and I think the number wasn't decided, I think we left it up to city council. I thought that was a good idea, I mean, if we were talking short-term rentals, but I just don't wanna repeat of that, to spend a year developing something, and then for us to get to the final loop of it, and then just not have the support at the end of it. So, I mean, our master plan calls for it, but if we're gonna do something that monumental, it takes a lot of, a lot of work, and then you have to educate the developers, and then you have to educate the economic development people to sit there and say, this is not something you're used to seeing. So, like, when a developer comes in, they're like, okay, I slapped this up, what are my setbacks? No, 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 what, you know, like, it doesn't work like that. You need to build right here, this is where you build, and these are the materials you can use, pick. This is how many windows you have to give me. Uses are whatever, but this is what you have to. Once they get it, they're like, oh, wow, this works out really well, and like, you know, but it takes them a little while to get it.
Once that is already developed and everybody's on the same page, it develops quickly. City of East Lansing ha, has it on their, I guess, north, northwestern portion, and it, three, four, five developments, bam, 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 because every, oh, this is, it's plug and play.
And you get whatever uses you want.
And they can copy other developers easy enough to, hey, here's the blueprint, let's just follow that, bang.
Yeah, I mean, so once they get it, they get it, but the community's not used to it. The developers in our area aren't used to it. So, it does take a little bit of time, so. And then your, your zoning ordinance, obviously, the uses have to be, you know, you're like, these are the uses allowed within this boom. I mean, but, it, you know, I've, Jacob Kane is another planner that's implementing, and he, and in Mount Pleasant, and he said, yeah, there is definitely some hurdles. When we first started this, he's like, development slowed down because developers weren't used to it, and it was difficult, so a lot of them walked. He's like, it took us to get the right kind of developer in there to show them that it was all right, and then, like, once they did, he said it started taking off in that area. He's like, it's not, he's like, yeah, but there's been hiccups. So, I mean, I'm not saying, it, but you do see cities adopting piecemeal, you know, an area maybe that has form-based code. And I think the Peninsula District is the right area for it. Extending out River Street down that way, you hear it over and over from the people here, is, is what they want.
And, and there's a lot more usable property than just the ironworks boom. You know, if you ever strolled behind there, there's acres and acres of land back there.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and undeveloped, I mean, literally, you could, you know, I, I could see, you know, housing areas there, condos, or.
I mean, you just have to be careful of your brownfield, because a lot of that area is. So, like, when we talk, like, residential in that area, in the Peninsula District, outside of the areas that are currently residential, but the areas you're talking about along the coastline there, that were traditionally like tanneries, or ironworks buildings, or whatever, when you look at those, and you're saying, hey, let's throw residential in there, you'd be like, well, have you had a phase one and phase two done? Like, you need to talk to the city brownfield and ensure that these areas are clean before we say, yeah, go ahead and put residential in.
Yeah, that's true.
As far as, like, the lot coverages, though, I'm sorry, I went way off on a tangent, I apologize. If that's something you want us to look at, what you're gonna find here, and I can tell you without looking at it too much, is you're gonna find a bunch of residential and open lots that have massive amounts of open space in them. And then what you're gonna find is, from the ironworks building down towards River Street, old buildings that are almost fully built out. So, like, when we say, let's adjust the lot coverages, okay, it's not gonna help those buildings, so what do you wanna do? You know, like, and then if the residential people wanna build out, I guess they could completely, but you could sit there and say, yeah, you can 100% lot coverage build out. At the same time, like, for Mr. Spalding, he still has to meet, you know, he, you know, he said two things here. Let's, let me put in the maximum number of parking lots I want. Well, he's not, he's not talking about any of the stuff we've talked about, which is pedestrian pathways, landscape architecture, lighting, which are all required, and have been for, since he's owned the building six years ago. So, we still haven't had a plan, so, you know, he makes comments that, about like, you know, well, here I was about to administer my plan, and I found out they changed everything. It's, it's difficult for us to, to help somebody who puts $20,000 into plans, when they've never spoken to us about what their, what their ideas are. I mean, if I'm investing that kind of money, I, I might have a conversation with us. I hope to help him one day. I hope he submits his plan soon, so we can work together, but I hope you, you understand that we're not trying to be, you know, to, to stop him, we're trying to help him. I think the amendment tonight was a good one, and I, I appreciate you guys doing that.
Just because you. I agree with what Pam said earlier about the two different directions of things that we were talking about. Another question I've got, a little bit, when Mr. Spalding got his initial building permit, do you have any idea when he originally got it?
I don't know. I mean, like, that's.
I remember when the, that part where you got that second floor with those, that was never part of the building years ago. That's all it had done.
But he does have the, he's got the building permits in the windows.
Yeah, but when did he get them?
I didn't look at the date.
So, are they, are they state-issue building permits, too? So, and those are issues that we ran into in the past. And, and I will not comment on that, because I really don't have any information to give you.
I like how he put where he's turned out the east part of two buildings, and I, no, historically, it used to be. I know. I like how he put where he's uh turned out the east part of two buildings and that, no, historically, it used to be like an old garage-type building down there. That was a workshop down there that kept your block. That was not it. That's where he wants to put the parking lot. There was no residential buildings, so.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's taken down two other houses.
No, they're still there. They're all still there.
He owns Lake Street or still.
Yeah, he took them out. I I thought he was talking about the ones on the other side.
No, everything on Lake Street is still there. He took it, he took out the uh.
Uh, he's the old eight, anti.
Yeah, because it needed to be tore down.
But then he took the houses on between his his the gas station and uh boyers.
That's the ones we're talking about. They took took out.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, those had.
That's what I thought he was talking about.
Church building and.
You guys realize he has two different projects too as well? Okay.
Yeah.
And and we'd like to help him. I mean, really, really, like, we'd like to save him money so this doesn't happen.
I'd like to at least see his plans, you know, like I said, he's not showing any plans to anybody. He's like, okay, here's my plans. I'm just, that bothers me when you got stuff that he's got in the back pocket. None of us, none of you guys, who's seen them? You know?
I mean.
That's that that just raises, okay, what are they trying to sneak through? That's my worries.
I'm with you, Bob.
Right, I, you know, like we do, like, uh, I went into a project one time and people built on the wrong parcel. But other than that, you guys have been doing a heck of a job and I hope, I hope you got huge bottles of aspirin in your office for all the headaches.
These guys are great. And Nancy.
All right. Done? That's it. Okay. Question on the Family Video Store sold or that, or maybe it's fact that a cigarette store is going in?
That's what I've heard.
Now, which one's up on the highway?
Wild Bills.
Wild Bills.
It's Wild West is gonna come in or something like that.
I thought it was Wild West was up on the highway.
Whatever one is, whatever is the opposite one's coming in.
It's the opposite one. I think it's a Wild Bills coming in.
That's what I've.
I've really, I really assumed they were the same place, so I'm sorry.
That is what I've heard. Um, but no, we don't have any permits. We don't have.
Well, the signage on that, um, can we go to a monument sign rather than having?
I mean, you can make it, if they come in with a special use, then you can you can dictate things like that, but.
That's that sign's been out of commission for what I've seen over a year.
I'd be careful. I'd ask the city attorney.
So we can, if that's something you want to work towards, we can look into it.
It would be nice for that thing to come down. Now, I saw you mentioned also possibly being multiple tenants in there. Would that stuff have to come to you guys?
It depends on what they do, so um, if they just repave the parking lot and just have the building in there and it's all retail, then no. I mean, like, so like, it it really depends on what they do.
Okay, because I read them going, okay, they want to have a couple other businesses in there. Would you guys have to be involved in that?
Yeah.
That's just a question I, that's in the back of my mind on it.
Same question.
And and I did um made a comment earlier in a meeting we had. I will make a comment again. Um, July first is quickly approaching. Dumpsters in the city, um, and uh regulating them. I would suggest we offer great flexibility in allowing people um to get them in any which way they can.
But the greatest perpetrator hasn't made one move towards.
Well, so here's the question. Do they own the building?
I I don't know. I.
They don't.
You know which one I'm talking about.
Yeah, they don't own the building, so.
Nasty as it's ever been.
Yeah, so they don't own that building. Um, it's owned by a single person. Hopefully, we get a chance to address some of these issues and concerns that you guys have on that. Hopefully, everybody starts um regulating themselves here and starts putting in some dumpster corrals that can have grease traps and everything in them.
And there's there's four or five different uh good examples of how they can look. I mean, it's, there's not just one, there's three, you know, uh, every every different types of material. The the one from North Channel is is uh steel fencing with the the little.
Chain link fence with the slats in it.
The slats in it. Um, and then you've got the, you know, the nice wooden corrals that they have over by the Arthur Street.
City's got some nice ones too. I mean, they got really nice ones.
West Coast got a nice one by there.
City's dumpsters, they're they're uh they're great. Those those corrals are.
Yeah, they need to, they need to have a roof or barbed wire though, because people are still just going by the one on First Street Beach and throwing it over the wall.
Do it to commercial. Do we know how many have complied so far?
Uh, if we went by permits, like two. So I mean, we waived, if you guys remember, we waived the the fee requirements for those. And we are offering e- extreme um exemptions on just getting them compliant.
There's um.
You guys have been bending over backwards for them, basically.
Well, and people, I think, have forgotten due to COVID, so it might be something that we, um, and I think we're gonna do a mailing as well. We'll talk to the city manager about it and just say, hey, oh, you have two more?
There's two more. Uh, they're no longer using dumpsters.
Oh, okay, that's good.
A hundred dollar fine.
Well, they they have turned over to residences, so they just have regular um.
They went to the totes.
Totes, thank you. Totes.
So, um, well, that's good. Um, so we'll reach out to the city manager and try to get a mailing out just to remind everybody. Maybe we'll remind the newspaper um that this is coming yet again and.
City website, Facebook.
Try to try to get it out again and hopefully people start complying.
I think I still have some pictures if you'd like me to.
Uh, it's a, it's a public health and safety issue, if I remember, if I, I'm quoting George correctly.
All right, with that, make a or take a motion to adjourn at eight fifty.
Motion.
Motion by Bob's second. Nick? We're adjourned.